Board meeting, would you kindly join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Select memorandums with us tonight sadly his mom passed late last week and the wake is this evening, so on behalf of the board and our entire staff, we want to extend our condolences to the Mr. Mirandi and the entire Mirandi family. Item thirty, approval, all night graduation party. Is someone here representing the?
She is not here.
Here. Is did, was she coming? Should we wait up?
She is coming, so.
Okay.
Yeah, she told me she was coming.
I was gonna say, so.
We'll circle back?
Yes.
We'll circle back to that one. Item thirty-one, five K fundraiser, The James Gang. All right, come on up. Sit, sit right in front and if you'd, for the record, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about The James Gang.
Perfect, okay, is that good?
Yes.
So, thank you for having us here tonight to propose our five K fundraiser. My name is Lauren Anderson and I'm representing The James Gang. The James Gang is a local, mostly family-run nonprofit. Our focus is inclusion for adults with intellectual disabilities while also raising awareness for a rare condition called NARS-1. So, my brother back there came from oral support, James, and he's one of only ten in the United States with that condition and is currently the oldest diagnosed patient. So, this year, we were selected as a 2024 official Boston Marathon charity partner. So, both of our bibs are being used by Burlington natives, including my cousin, who will be pushing James in a Hoyt racing chair. So, running is a very big part of our organization and our family. So, we're able to, with the funds raised from the Boston Marathon efforts, we're partnering with Burlington Rec to bring in an I can swim or I can bike program, a local day hab program to bring in some music therapy in Zumba, as well as a research grant for NARS-1. So, as we're looking forward to the fall in our next fundraiser, we thought a five K would be a perfect way to combine our love of running while also raising awareness for our organization. So, we thought no better place than Burlington with the community that's been so supportive of us over the years and especially in the past six months leading up to this marathon. So, we're proposing a date of Sunday, September twenty-ninth, but we are open to other dates as well. We'd like to use the Burlington Education Foundation five K route, starting and ending at the high school, which I believe you have a copy of if you're not familiar with. So, that is our, a little bit about us and our fundraiser and let me know if there's any questions I can answer.
All right, Lauren, well, thank you so much. Michael, any questions or concerns?
No, sounds like a great event and a great cause and I wish you the best of luck with it. Who's using the other bib? You said two bibs.
Two bibs, yep. So, my cousin is pushing James and then Derek Diantonis, I think you say it. He grew up in Burlington as well, lives in California now, but.
Good luck to both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I unfortunately don't share your love of, the love of running that you have, but I share the love of this event. I wish I could have approved this last week when I was greeting it, so you'll definitely get my support. What a great event.
Thank you so much.
Nick?
My only question, I know you said you were working with the Rec Department, that no other events are happening, that you have this space, everything is cleared with the use of the high school and that, and that route?
Yes, yeah, I talked to a few people at the high school. They said, come here first, get the date approved and we'll work together to make sure the parking lot is all set for us.
Awesome, excellent. No questions for me, this is fantastic.
Just one quick, rain date or is it rain or shine?
That's a good question. I guess we'd have to do a rain date for severe weather, but hopefully, I think we would run even if it was drizzling.
We know it's not gonna snow, so that.
Right, that's why we picked September, we don't, we don't want to be dealing with that.
Well, I did put my shovels away, Mike put his away, so we may be cursed and Nick said he's gonna blame us for it. So, what the rain date, it's nine twenty-nine, is that, what'd you say, is it Saturday?
That's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday. Would you go to the following Sunday with a rain date?
I think so, yeah, right.
Do we have a date for that?
Probably October.
She's got, probably the sixth.
October sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have to make, make sure that, that gets voted in?
Perfect, yes, thank you. Hopefully, we will not need it.
October second?
Sixth.
Sixth. Oh, goodness gracious, great. Okay, Lauren, this is your first event in Burlington, correct? I'm not familiar with your.
Yeah, we've done some other fundraisers, so this, we do an animal golf tournament that my cousin runs, he's from Burlington, so we all, I get a lot of Burlington folks there, but it's not in Burlington. This past January, we did a fundraiser, an Irish band at the Legion. We did very well there, raising over $10,000. That was our first, our first really big event.
Yeah, well, congratulations. I'm looking over your mission statement and, and some of the other things you do and I'd be honored to support you and I'm sure the rest of the board feels the same way, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the five K fundraiser for The James Gang, September twenty-ninth.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion with the date's twenty-ninth and the rain date, October sixth, second.
Motion, a second, anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero. We see another twenty-nine.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with the event.
Thank you.
You want to just mention how someone can donate, if any of the viewers from home would like to donate?
Sure, yes, so we have a website, it's teamjamesgang.com, that has all our information, how to donate, lead a little bit more about us, keep up to date with our events and specifically the five K, as well as the marathon. And I know for those who don't know, the duo teams actually take off before the elite runners, so if you're watching the marathon on TV, keep a, keep a lookout for them, they have a bright blue chair.
Thank you, that's awesome.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item, item thirty-two, approval, extension of hours, the charity divinity, the Burlington Marriott, this is for the Hearn family, yeah, good to see you again.
Good evening, nice to see you again, sir.
My name is Bob Hearn, I'm the president of the Hearn Family Charitable Foundation and this will be our twenty-second year, eighteenth at the Burlington Marriott and we are requesting alcohol license to be extended till 2:00 AM with a last call at 1:30. This is St. Patrick's Day gala event, we're raising money for Fisher House Boston and Ironstone Farm. Both these organizations take care of veterans and their families.
All right, very good. Gentlemen, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, just a, in the past, was there some sort of donation that we had to approve as well, or receiving a donation?
There used to be, but it became kind of a hassle, so we're not, we're not requesting that today, just the extension of hours.
Nick?
No, I don't think I have any questions, I know that we've, we've done this before and it seems to be in line with everything we've done before, so I'm fine.
Very good. Michael?
No, it sounds like a great organization, great event, no questions.
Agreed, yeah, I see Mr. Hearn regularly over the years and, yeah, I can't say enough about the, the event itself and the charities that you sponsor, I think it's, I think it's wonderful. I have, I have nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve the extension of hours.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the one hour extension of hours for the charity event Marriott and no rain date necessary.
Let's hope not, yeah.
That's the roof thing.
Let's hope not. Do a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, very good. Anything further on, on this motion? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck with the event.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, very good. All right, we're gonna circle back to item thirty, all night graduation party.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Great, thank you.
I'm Karen Weisner. I am currently the chairperson for the Burlington High School All Night Graduation Party. We are hosting again June second from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. For those of you that may or may not know about the event, it's basically an all-night graduation party to host the graduates and keep them safe on graduation night, which has been in effect since 1991, very successfully. Our ask tonight is to see if the town will once again sponsor two detail police officers from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM the night of the event to support us, keeping everybody safe.
Where you gonna be this year, Karen?
What's that?
Where are you gonna be this year?
The high school again.
Back at the high school.
Yeah, we were back at the high school last year as well, very successful, much more room, actually, it's a much better venue to host all the stuff we want to host, so.
Let me start to my right.
Thank you, Chairman, no, fully in favor, my, our class was the first one to actually have this back in 1991, back in the Stone Age, but.
Hey, we're not that old.
Mike, where's that for us?
But, no, I've volunteered a couple of times last year and a few years and it's a great, it's a great time for the graduates and it's very safe, it keeps everyone off the, keeps everyone sort of out of trouble on graduation night and fully in favor of this, great night, great event.
Very good. On this side of the table, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not so much for Karen, Karen, this is a great event, it's supported a hundred percent, but Mr. Sagarino, is there any way, does it, why did it have to keep coming to us for this? Can't we just do this without coming to the board? Well, I know for one thing, the money is in, is in the board's select, select, select board budget, but it's been, historically, it's been tradition, I guess we would have to ask each individual board, you know, whether or not they're in favor of that allocation every year, so.
I actually like them coming in and talking a little bit about the event and.
All right, I was just curious, didn't know why it had to be approved to, you know, and go through us every year, that's all. That's all.
Nick?
No, I'm absolutely in favor of this, I think it's a wonderful idea, I'm glad that it's still going strong, you know, I'd fully support it.
Yeah, I agree with, the tradition carries on, I think that's great, so it's kind of speaks for itself, it's been, as Mike knows, back in the Stone Age, it's been, it's been well attended and, and people speak very highly of the, of the event, so, good luck with that. I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the two detail office for the.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the two detail officers for the all-night graduation party on June second at the high school.
Second by Mike, second by Nick, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen.
Find my place. Item thirty-three, citizens' time. Is there anybody in their room or online here for citizens' time this evening? Being none, you don't see anybody out there, no? Nobody online? Item thirty-four, approval, snow and ice deficit. I see some DPW folks here. There he is, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board. So, I'm here to, with the recommendation that the select board authorize additional funds for this year's snow and ice budget. I think it's, it's due to certain state municipal finance laws, I think we keep this at a, at a very low rate to start the year and I think out of the last at least seventeen years, there's only been two years we haven't had to come back to have additional funds put in. So, this is a similar request to last year, same amount, I think last year's season was pretty similar as well, so we are currently, to start the year, we are authorized to spend $350,000, we're currently at $395,000 or so, so we're about $45,000 over what has been authorized and we're asking for a total of $250,000 to hopefully not have to come back and wrap up the year.
Paul, anything to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Due to the way that the laws are written, where we're allowed to, to spend whatever we need to remove the snow and ice, most communities, including Burlington, budget an artificially low number, so we budget three fifty, $350,000 every year and John, in his budgetary work, accounts for another half a million dollars, that's, gets us more in range with what we typically spend, I would say about $850,000 in a year. As Brian indicated, we've been pretty fortunate with the snow. Over the years, I've learned that it's not necessarily the amount of inches, but it's the, the number of storms, when they occur, to, to figure out sort of what the labor costs are, so this is a very customary request to the board every single year and, like you say, it looks as though we're gonna, we're gonna finish off the year with a, a pretty low spending on snow and ice here, which will, which will be great for, for John and working, working through next year's budget as well.
Very good, thank you. Questions? Michael? Wow, letting you off easy. All right, if there's nothing further, we'll entertain a motion to approve the, the amounts shown in the backup for the snow and ice deficit.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the $250,000 addition for the snow and ice deficit budget.
Second.
Okay, now I see, yeah. Okay, anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, Brian.
Now, I want Mr. Hayes is here for the DPW policy update.
Good evening, Tom Hayes, town engineer. So, here tonight to open up session on traffic calming measures. So, by way of history, if you're not familiar with traffic calming goes back, studies go back to the late seventies, early eighties, really ramped up in the nineties, gotten integrated into the Federal Highway Administration manual uniform traffic control devices, so it is legitimate, you know, there are a lot of legitimate traffic calming measures, there's a whole toolbox of things that we can choose from. Informally, Burlington's tried some stuff in the past, teeing up intersections, raised crosswalks, truck exclusions, time restricted, do not enters, that sort of stuff, but, but the town administrator, there's been a lot of call for traffic calming, as you know, traffic is a problem in Burlington, so the town administrator asked the traffic community to evaluate various measures that can be incorporated into the rules and regulations. So, what we looked at was, well, pretty much the things that we really could support were speed tables and speed humps, which are, I don't know if you've seen any images of those, I can have some pictures there if you're interested.
Thank you.
Right out of toolboxes, the Federal Highway Administration toolboxes, the traffic calming.
So, what, what we did was pretty much kind of searched the internet, came up with other communities that had policies in place, we stole a lot of information from them, brought to the traffic committee, everyone had their input into it, the policy, what we proposing, you should have in your packets, it's also on the backside of that picture. We got actually some feedback, one of the abutters to, to Fox Hill, Bill Boyman, who's on the, he's on the Conservation Commission, he gave me some good feedback. So, we can, I don't know if Bill wants to join us, we can talk about it, but some of, some of the evaluation and the design criteria, he has some good ideas on, so, I mean, that's the whole idea, is just to open up a discussion, see what you folks think, see, get some feedback from, you know, from the residents and then just kind of press on.
Thank you, I'm Bill Boyman, I'm a town meeting member for Precinct One, which includes Fox Hill Road and I, first of all, want to thank the people who met with us before, we had a town area meeting about the speed concerns for people in Precinct One. Sergeant Abascalone was there, Tom Hayes, Paul Sagarino and Brian White were all there and we discussed some of the items on this and I'm very thankful that you have brought this to this point to start the process with the draft policy. The way this is written is a great start, I was looking at a few of the items on here and wanted to just make comments. The first one is that it says, the second bullet mentions getting signatures from 75% of street abutters, I think that's kind of a high bar to set. I looked also online at some other communities, primarily Detroit, Detroit has a, a new program, they want to install 10,000 speed hump, uh, speed tables in Detroit and so they have a policy for people to apply for and against and stuff like that and their threshold is 51%, just a simple majority of abutters that can register an opinion and, and on the issue, so I'd like to see that 75% be, be lower. One of the things that came up in the meeting that we had and I don't see in this document at all was the methodology for funding this, this issue. We had discussed the possibility of having a fund approved and in place, similar to like the sidewalk fund and then people would apply and be qualified and it would come, the money would come from an already existing fund and then Town Meeting would be involved in keeping the, the fund replenished on a regular basis. This is written as if every time that the, uh, community wants to apply for speed tables, they would have to go in front of Town Meeting and get an individual funding for each individual project through Town Meeting. So, my desire would be to see a permanent fund established that would give it some more ease of, of application. There is a list of design criteria, there's eleven bullet points under selection design criteria and my first question was, in order to qualify in an application, would you need to meet every single one of those or, you know, those just waiting factors in determining the, the necessity for the speed calming in that area? I don't think it makes sense to require all of them, I mean, for example, if you had ten of these bullets passed but no accidents, obviously, the other ten indicate that there is a need for speed control and why wait for an accident before you qualify? So, I think that those should be guidelines on the selection process, but not a mandatory, you have to check eleven boxes. The, one item says, the fourth bullet, speed five miles per hour or more over the 85th percentile, it's not clear to me what that means. The speed data that Sergeant Abascalone had done for the area, he did some, some really good speed data when he provided the information, it did show what the 85th, you know, percentile was, but what is this bullet trying to say? Is there a certain amount of vehicles or percentage that has to be over, more than five miles per hour, over that, that bullet is not clear to me in its meaning. So, what would need to be met with respect to that? The last bullet, no scheduled paving within the next five years, that's not clear either. I am assuming it means within the next five years after a speed table is installed, that you don't want to then plan to rip up the street. If your street is planned to be paved two or three years from now, to me, that means that would be the ideal time to put them in, if you met the qualifications, is when the street is being paved. So, I think that should be, some of this should be rewarded in order to, I think, make it clearer and more easy to understand. It would be nice if it was ideally a clear and concise process that you, an applicant could easily determine whether they qualify or not and that the people, the board, when they're going to endorse it, would be able to do the same. So, I think this is a great start and I'd just like to see it modified somewhat and reworked a little bit before it's actually voted on and approved. Thank you.
Some, some, some good, some good points, Bill. Paul, you got anything to, before you open it up to the board?
Yeah, just some, just some overriding things, as the board is aware, you get copied on many of the emails, you know, we do get speeding complaints from time to time, I think the approximate cost of the speed tables, Tom?
They range from five to 10,000 and we have no experience installing them, so we, for now, we're just carrying $1,500 per, per install. They'd be cheaper in the course of a paving project, because everything's, you know, all the equipment's there and you can design it into the pavement, if it has to be an individual install, it's going to be a lot more expensive.
And, you know, just along with what the board's seen, we wanted to make sure that there was significant neighborhood involvement in the decision. We've had instances over the past where we approve a stop sign and then we find out that more than half the neighbors didn't want the stop sign, just a couple of neighbors wanted it, so we just want to make sure that there's really a, a strong measure of support in there and again, in an area like Fox Hill, I think we would need multiple speed humps. The speed humps have only recently been added into the MUTCD Bible, which is why we've never had them before, as you know, engineering likes to stick to the Bible, it's defendable, it's warrantable, so we're really happy with Tom's plan, I think it's a good starting point, we don't need the board to vote tonight, we can take your feedback and, you know, Bill's feedback as well and try to rework the situation, but I just think it's important to understand for the board that we want to try to set up criteria so that these go where they belong, they're not going to be suitable for every street in the community, I think the town would go bankrupt if we had to put them everywhere, everyone might want them, but there certainly are plenty of areas that are, that they are appropriate for and we just want to make sure, again, with the funding, we don't have the money in the DPW budget, so this would have to be a town meeting request of some sort, whether it's a fund that's created or whether, you know, we bring it to a town meeting and ask for funding for each individual installation, but I think it's, the board should just put a lot of thought into this part of it and that once these speed tables go up in a particular neighborhood, it's, it's very likely that we're going to receive many requests from a lot of neighborhoods, so that's why I think Tom's policy, there's a pretty high standard for, you know, what would qualify for, for a speed table and I would just ask the board sort of keep, keep all that in mind that, you know, once the first speed table gets installed somewhere, I do think that there will be a very, there will be a lot of requests for speed tables across town, because as you know, we do get a lot of complaints about speeding on residential roads and, so that's, that would be my summary, summary, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Wow, yeah, I, I'm sure you guys have some questions.
Yes.
I'm sure you have. Jim, I want to second with you.
Tom, just as our town engineer, how do you feel as though, are you, do you feel as though all eleven criteria have to be met or you think?
No, I think it's more of an evaluation, so when you evaluate, you may have, you may have a neighborhood that doesn't have accidents and doesn't have speeding, but has a high volume, or you may have speeding without volume or, or accidents, it's something that the traffic committee will look, you know, the process would be first to do a speed study, determine, you know, is there a problem and then it's to use this, these criteria as guidelines. You know, some of the things that Bill brought up was, are, you know, some of the language has to be corrected, like the 85th percentile, the intent of this, if it's a 30 mile an hour street and people are going 35, say it's 15%, 10% people are speeding, then you want to bring that back to 30 miles an hour, so instead of the 85th percentile, it should be 5% or five miles an hour over the posted speed and a percentage, whether, whether the board selects 10% people speeding or 15% and then we can bring that back by installing speed tables, you can bring it back to the posted speed limit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, is there a minimum number of criteria you think you'd be looking for or is there flow, is it location dependent?
It's location dependent, so you evaluate, you know, Peter Baskaroon or whoever the safety officer is, the town will have to set up, you know, the speed cart, check all the speeds, record the speeds, see how, what people are doing out there, maybe it's, it's seasonal, I know at Fox Hill during the summer, it's a lot lower volume than it is when parents are dropping their kids off at Fox Hill.
Thank you, so, Bill, you can relax, you don't need all eleven boxes checked now. The other thing, how will this affect plowing?
Well, you can, you can, they won't affect the plows, they're, I mean, the.
Because I'm assuming speed bumps are worse to plow because it's more of an abrupt.
Yeah, these, these are gentle, the speed table, speed tables are actually a lot longer than the speed humps, speed tables like 12, actually 18 feet long, so it's a six foot up, six foot flat, six foot down, speed humps are a little bit shorter.
We hope they'll be six inches up, not six feet up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That'll slow them down.
They're six feet long, so it's three segments, so in six feet you ramp up, you have a six foot flat.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And then six down and usually, I think it's either five or six inches up, but they can be designed for a specific speed, you know, but they're safe, I mean, they're safe, not gonna, they're not, a speed bump is a defect in the road, you can hit that, you can lose control because they're not meant to be going over at 30 miles an hour, these are designed to go over 30 miles an hour.
And the last question, first of all, I've seen these in more, more towns now all around here, just the definition of direct street of butters, is that people who live on the street live off of that street or those streets are but, the road that is in question?
Well, we envisioned, if you, if your property butts that street, whether you're a corner lot and your address is on Fox Hill or it's on Beaverbrook, you have direct frontage on, on Fox Hill, you may be affected, you may not want those speed bumps, you may not want them on your property and so you should have a say on whether they go or whether you want them.
So, for example, Fox Hill Road, the ones on the corner of Fox Hill, Beaverbrook would be a butters, but not the ones at the very beginning of Beaverbrook by Wilmington Road, because they're, even though that street abuts it, they're so, they're far away that it.
Yeah, they're not a direct butter of Fox Hill.
All right, that answers it, all set, Mr. Chairman.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Jim. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a great first draft, and I'm glad that we're having this conversation. Because I feel like providing the residents a mechanism by which they can engage, you know, with us and raise their concerns, you know, in a more process-oriented fashion is, in my opinion, the way we should be going. Right? Bill's got experience, you know, with the fundraising committee, building process, right? Which, I mean, I'm glad that you're part of this conversation, because, you know, initial playbook stuff is always the hardest to put together, you know? I, just my own two cents, I think that we'll probably start it as a, you know, Town Meeting-funded source type thing, but I'd like to move to a, a larger funding mechanism at some point. I think we should, we should absolutely entertain the conversation. And I honestly wonder if we should be having a conversation about just traffic mitigation in general, or traffic infrastructure-based funding source through Town Meeting that we can talk about as a, as a larger bucket of money that we can pull from for, you know, if we need to do more emergency-based things, or, you know, short-term based things. And then I, I honestly wonder, like, depending on who the residents are, or who gets involved, we know that, that, you know, engagement can be kind of tough, and timing and schedules of people today can be difficult. If it's not that residents will present the funding article themselves at Town Meeting, but rather, we would take it up as something that we would present at Town Meeting, and that the residents would be required to at least join us at Town Meeting as a representative and sponsor of, you know, what's, what's about to occur? And, because we have no problem sitting in front, you know, 126 people and being like, this resident has an issue, or these residents have an issue in the state where we want to talk about it. You know, because at that point, we would have already had voted on it and, and made I would, I'm, I'm excited to have this conversation, and I absolutely want to see a second draft. This is, this is a great first draft. I, I don't want to supply a ton of comments right now, because I know that there's still a lot more work to be done, and I want you to be able to have the space to do that work. And then, and then see a second draft and, and kind of go from there. Jim had the same question I had about the direction of butters, so I won't go over that a second time. But as of right now, that's all the questions and thoughts that I have.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, like Nick, I'm glad to see that we're developing a process for the residents to request one, instead of just sending us an email saying, "The, the traffic on our street is too fast." I had a question similar to Jim's about the abutters. So Fox Hill Road, we'll go back to the example, it's a really long road. You know, say we wanted to put speed tables only on a certain section of it, would you need the certain percentage of the whole street, or just the section that's involved?
I mean, personally, I would, I would think just the abutters to the project. So if the project goes from, say, Wildwood to Westwood, that's all you're looking for. The folks down close to Opeland won't be affected, because the speed humps or speed tables are not in front of their properties.
Okay, but there would be if they cross by or use that to get to, say, the school or whatever.
Yeah, like anybody else in the neighborhood or in the, or in the town. If you're going down Fox Hill, you're going to have to slow down, because the speed tables are there.
Okay, and then the abutters would be anyone on a cross street with a corner lot, pretty much?
Mm-hmm. Well, the envision was anybody who directly butts the street, whether their address is Fox Hill or one of the side streets.
Okay. Yeah, I do, then if that's the case, I do agree with Mr. Boyman that 75% might be a little high, and we can look at that number. I know this is just a draft. My other question is, do we already have a traffic committee, or who would make up that committee?
Well, there is a traffic committee.
Okay.
There's a volunteer from DPW Planning.
Police?
Police, fire. It's just folks, originally, the, the weight of traffic was on the safety traffic committee, excuse me, the traffic safety officer. So in order to help him and kind of spread out, spread out the pain, we all volunteered to help him out.
Okay, good. Because I did want to make sure, like, police, DPW, all the, the relevant departments would it, would have a say in that committee and approval of this. It's great. Make sure everyone gets, gets a say. Another question for Paul is, do we have maybe like a hot list, or do the police department have a list of potential sites that are kind of like trouble areas or spots that may be candidates for this? Or do we have like a hot list, or?
Public, public traffic officer could certainly help us out, you know, with the trash and speed data that he has. They do a lot of work on determining, you know, the speeding and, so we don't have an official list formed, but again, the discussion was precipitated in, when we were speaking to the folks on Fox Hill, in particular with the, the new school on the way. So they had some concerns, and they reached out to us. And so this policy has been as a result of those discussions.
Well, it's a good first draft, and I look forward to further discussion. Thank you for bringing this to us. Tom? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Boy, whenever we talk about traffic, we, it is, it is always a ton of interest, as we've been standing room only in this room over the years, with particular items. So, so Tom, Paul referred to it as the Bible. So there's new regulations that are supporting these, these type of things? I know we've never, ever discussed these before, or if the discussion ever came up, Mr. Sanchez would slam the brakes on any discussion of adding any additional type of speed bump. I see this is slightly different, as you explained, but.
Yes, the speed bumps were never approved. You put it in a road that's designed for, for five miles an hour, where the average road is designed for 30. So the Federal Highway Administration, they have, they have guidance manual of uniformed traffic control devices, which is pretty much covers everything from traffic markings, anything traffic related. And it gives guidance, and it is, I mean, it is the law, it was approved as a federal law. So if you put something in the road that's not in compliance with the MUTCD, and someone gets hurt, or there's an accident, then the town can be liable. So that's kind of how it releases itself. So this is our Bible. We use this. Every time someone comes and they want something, they want something traffic-related, we pull it out, and we say, yes, it meets the standard, or no, it doesn't. So a lot of things never make it up to this level, because, you know, they're, they just, we, you know, we pretty much deny them, and the person does not want to go any further than that.
I, I would anticipate, if the, the board approves some sort of a policy here, I would anticipate knocking your door down, Paul, looking for hearings on these. Is there an alternative? Just, for example, I brought it up before, and kind of frowned upon by the administration, these 3D crosswalks, some communities have been using, have been very effective. I think they use them in Malden and a few other surrounding towns. I think the concern here in Burlington was it might be too effective, people actually thinking they're going to, you know, drive into a river or something, whatever that 3D object is that we put on the road, but it's a lot cheaper cost than, you know, doing, doing something like this.
Yeah, the, the Federal Highway Association, the Federal Highway Administration has, actually has a, a guidance, which is not to use them, because for that reason, people see something in the road that's not supposed to be there, where they, they see, and they, they drive off the road.
Some of them are, some I've seen are quite convincing, even.
And they are very strict. Like crosswalks, there's only three different types you can put down, in accordance with the MUTCD. So it's very specific on size of the, of the, the line striping, the color of the line striping, the design that can be put into the crosswalks, they're very specific on what you can do in the roadway.
Okay, I got one, and one last question. In both of the photographs that you presented us tonight, there are bright yellow triangle signage.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming that has to be part of the speed bump. I don't, I don't mean to call them speed bumps, but I've never heard of this before, speed table.
Yeah.
So that would be part of any installation? We require two of these, at least two of these little yellow signs.
There'd be signage, these are actually pretty mild. I've seen other examples of speed tables and speed humps, and there are a lot more, a lot more signage, a lot more traffic markings. So these are mild compared to what I think would be actually implemented.
I'm seeing those other, the new crosswalk sign, I'm seeing them everywhere I go now. There's a lot of them. I see someone, someone online has a hand up. Could we?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's not a public hearing, so you're not required to hear from members of the public, but I do believe that Melissa was one of the neighbors.
Yes, she was one of the people at the meeting.
Had been dealing with us on this issue, so it's up to the chair if, if you wish to.
I, I can't read the name, so.
Melissa.
So, I'm not discriminating, but I'd be happy to listen to what Melissa has to say.
All right, Melissa, we'll send you an unmute.
Hey, everyone, thank you for considering this document or process to be ruled out for the larger community. It's really appreciated. And I just had one follow-up question in terms of the percentile of, you know, street abutters and residents. Specifically for the Fox Hill neighborhood, I know that in the past five, 10 years, the speed bumps have been an issue and have already been brought to the table multiple times. So I was wondering if that would be used in consideration for these speed humps, because, you know, the, the residents have already petitioned to get the current speed bumps and keep them over the years. So I didn't know if that would be used in consideration for this neighborhood, as well as if any other neighborhoods have had the same experience.
Tom, are you able to answer?
Well, I guess more of a policy decision, whether the board would accept the existing speed humps as, in lieu of having a petition from the neighborhood with 75% of the abutters, or 50% or 2/3, whatever, before it decides they want as the percentage of neighborhood who wants these traffic calming measures.
Sorry, in, in lieu of the current speed bumps that are there?
Well, there are speed bumps in Fox Hill, and if I understand the question properly, would the board accept the fact that there are speed bumps in lieu of a petition from the Fox Hill abutters?
The fact that the street already petitioned to the board.
Pretty much grandfathered, right? We had this discussion a couple of years ago when we paved, right? But it was one of those, that was one of those meetings we had with standing room only.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware that any, any of us working here for the town now knows the history of those speed bumps at this point, so I don't know if any of the, any of the board members remember the history behind it, but certainly, whatever precipitated that took place well before the time that I've been with the town, so.
Kind of went hand in hand shortly after construction of the school down there, if I recall. It was the Stone Act, you think, before the Stone Act?
Well, I do remember we used to have the go-kart races where Fox Hill was up, we were laying circles. We used to actually go up the hill.
Yeah, they've been there, they've been a long time. I don't think there's any, any danger of anyone, any official body removing them. The demand was loud and clear from the neighbors down there last time we had this discussion. So I, I wouldn't anticipate any, any issues done. I, I don't know what you fellows want to do, it sounds to me like I'm kind of getting a sense that we, it needs to be massaged a little bit more and come back for another.
In the meantime, I would just request that the board members provide any feedback, thoughts, ideas to Tom directly on email, and then we'll have him compile all that information, and then we'll bring it back for the board at a, at a future meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up to Tom. What percentage, I don't mean to put you on the spot, are you, are you comfortable with a certain percentage of abutters, or do you have a recommendation on the number? A majority, 51%? 75?
You know, I really don't have an opinion. It was, 75% seemed like it was, through the documents that I was reviewing, 75% seemed like it was consistent through different communities requiring 75%. Whether it's 75, or 50, or 2/3, I, I think the abutters really have to be on board, you know, so that everyone, whether it's 50%, and then everyone's notified that this is going forward, so they can, they can put their two cents in, that could be another option. It's just, it's more of like, they, you know, like Paul said, we've had instances where we've gone forward and done certain traffic, traffic things, and people get upset. You know, because I wasn't informed on this, I didn't want this. So we just want to make sure everyone is happy with what we're proposing.
Anything further? Okay. All right, so I think that's what we're going to do. Paul, Tom, I think we're going to kick this around a little bit, a bit more, and bring it back at a later date.
Okay.
But thank you, very interesting discussion, interesting topic. I'm sure, I'm sure we'll, we'll hear from some.
Not the end of it.
No, it's not, not by a long shot yet.
It's an active, it's an active neighborhood, let's put it that way. So, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, we're there, we're there. Item 36, public hearing, grant of location, South Bedford Street, Enstar Electric Company is the.
She's online.
She's online. And what's.
Joanne.
Joanne. Hi, Joanne.
Good evening.
How are you?
Very well, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good.
We're going to allow you to begin a discussion on, on the grant of location on South Bedford and.
Chairman, we have to prove the.
Oh, we're going along here. Hold on, hold on, Joanne, I could timeout you just a minute, I'll get some.
I think I have.
That was great.
This is a public, this is a public hearing, the chair opens a public hearing. The official notice has been duly posted online, the town website, as well as local media outlets, and we request the board to waive the, the reading of the public. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I apologize, thank you. Okay, Joanne, I apologize. You're up. You're up.
Okay, so Eversource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately 230 feet of conduit into South Bedford Street, and this is for our own system improvement to be able to provide the citizens of Burlington with reliable service.
That's it? That's it?
That's it.
All righty. Gentlemen, questions, concerns on the, the application for Enstar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joanne, what precipitated the need? What, what changed, or was this just an increase of capacity, or what, what do we got going on here?
It is, it is for an increase of capacity and into, for load relief. Our engineers feel that it's necessary to, again, to continue to provide reliable service.
What type of relief?
Load. Load relief?
Electrical load, right? Before that. Mr. Chairman? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, good. Select my spell. I'm assuming, Joanne, correct me if I'm wrong, this has something to do, because the energy dry out in the northeastern campus, this is very close to the northeastern campus.
I have to be honest with you, I wasn't, I wasn't given that specific information, but I can certainly find that out for you if it's necessary.
No, it's not necessary. I was just curious. It's all. Okay. I mean, no, not really.
With it being at that intersection, knowing how busy that intersection can be, I just want to make sure that, you know, traffic is mitigated. It's a, it's a pretty high-traffic area, and then heading into Wilbur can get pretty backed up. So as long as, as long as that's okay, then I, I have no issue with the actual install. I just don't want to, you know, see huge, huge backups.
Yes, they'll, they'll be required to go through an engineering department for a street opening permit and all that good stuff, so they'll have to follow all the policies and procedures of the town in order to do so, you know, with the police details and all that. But, good point, very, very busy intersection right there, so.
Need load relief?
Okay, Nick?
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
Okay. Joanne, so are these going to be overhead wires or, or underground?
This is underground.
Okay. In that.
In that very area that is shown on your diagram here, it's got 11 double poles in that area.
11 double poles for decades, quite honestly. There are terrible eyesore, which, what can you tell me about double poles and your, and your policy of replacing them?
Very little to nothing. That's beyond my, my scope. I don't really get involved in those. I can, again, refer it to the appropriate department to have them, you know, deal with it. I'm sure they're aware of them, but as far as the policy, I'm really not well-versed in that. But I can certainly bring your concern to, to the appropriate people.
All right, we've, we've had these discussions.
Numerous, numerous times over the years with, not just your company, but Verizon your company, but Verizon and everybody else that's got stuff on these poles. And quite honestly, it's just, it's very frustrating. And I'm hoping to maybe seize upon this opportunity because they're all right exactly where you want to do your work. And I'd like to, I would like to see something, something concrete to assure me that these double poles are going to be addressed. And I would like to see something, whether it was side work order or something, before I would be willing to approve this petition. Jim?
In Burlington, the poles by Verizon.
All right. But they all hang their stuff.
No, I know. I know. I'm just, as far as the maintenance of the poles, replacement, that usually, they alternate towns. So in Burlington, it's Verizon. Just plain information.
But seven of them in this 230-foot stretch, it's ridiculous. Some of them have been there, like I said, for over 20 years. And I can attest to that because I was a young firefighter at the time, and one of these things was snapped. And it's still broken and still sitting there. And I wouldn't want to live in that house, looking out my window every day for 20 years and seeing this splintered pole in the area. I'm just thinking that this might be an opportunity. I doubt anything is going to happen. It's just been our history with these companies, but.
Mr. Chairman, just as an update, I know Governor Haley has in her municipal empowerment act that she'll be putting before the legislature is actual financial penalties for double poles, which would be the first time in history that we've ever actually had a tool to sort of enforce with financial considerations against the utilities up on the poles for the double poles. So we're very hopeful that that will pass the legislature, and that we'll finally at least have a tool for financial remediation. Like I say, it may be difficult to pin this all on EverSource. There's about five or six different entities up on the pole usually. And it's often a case of somebody comes off, and then they're waiting for the next person to come off. But I don't disagree with your extremely frustrating issue. And as a municipality, we've never really had any teeth to any sort of penalties on the utilities from these double poles. And we're very hopeful, again, if that act were to pass, that for once, we'll finally have a tool where we can at least financially find folks, and hopefully that incentivizes everybody up on the poles to move forward and get them switched out as quick as possible. I understand your frustration.
Yeah. We'll see if that ever happens. So, Joanne, I'm not going to be able to support this request tonight, again, unless you come back with something, some sort of document signed by you and Verizon or something, that there's a, you know, some sort of assurances that these poles are going to be addressed.
If it was EverSource territory, I think I would have more leeway. But whereas it is Verizon, I'm sure, again, we can certainly reach out to Verizon and share that your concern with them. But as far as making them act, I don't know that we have the power to do so.
All right. I'm only speaking for myself. Do you get the rest of the board here?
Would we willing to continue the public hearing to our next meeting? And see if there's any luck at all. There may not be, but give them a.
I'm open to that. I mean, if this is one pole in that area, it would be something different. There's seven of them right there, right in that 230-foot, the red line you see on your screen here.
So maybe if I can, you know, if we reach out to Verizon and we say, you know, look, EverSource is looking into this project, and you guys are the pole owners, but, you know, we really want to see some double poles addressed. And, Joanne, maybe you can help us apply some pressure from your side as well. And we extend a public hearing, and we reconvene at our next meeting to have that discussion, to see what traction we've made. Because, you know, I mean, Joanne, you're just the messenger in all this, and we appreciate you being as amiable as you can be, given the circumstances. But I agree with the chair, right? Like, I mean, you know, we drive around town, and there are double poles everywhere. And they, it's getting to a point now where it's like, come on. If it was one or two here or there, fine. And, you know, the chair is right. There are a lot in this area. And if we could have a couple addressed, I think that would go a long way, you know, in the general relationships that we try to build with, you know, the suppliers and utility vendors that we have here in Burlington. So I don't know. I'm with the chair in terms of, you know, extending this out. And Jim, I know you were saying that, and circling back, if we can make some traction happen in the meantime.
All right. Is there anybody in the room? Questions, concerns, or comments regarding the petition? Or anybody online? All right, I'm not seeing, Lynn, you don't see anybody? No?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jim.
I'll make a motion. We continue this public hearing to our meeting on March 25th, on or after 6:00 p.m.?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. And any further discussion? Joanne, anything further? Anything further on this for now?
No, I'll take your information back to my supervisor and see what we can do, as I say, from EverSource's point of view in contacting Verizon, see if anything can be done by that March 25th meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Appreciate that. Okay.
Joanne, you can reach out to us through Lynn, Lynn Mills, in our office. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
400. Okay. All right. Item 37, approval department budgets. John, what do you want to start with? The police?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So while we wait for Chief Brown to come up, I'll give you the high-level summary. You all have a copy of the summary document both in your books and shared electronically. As you can see, the police budget went from just over 10.1 million to the proposed budget of being just over 10.5 million for an increase of just under 4% or within the guidelines. The overall FTE and headcount is the same as, proposed to be the same as this year. And the budget as proposed includes contractual salary increases and some requested increases for expenses, occupancy, and capital. And I'll let the chief get into those. One thing of note is that in the, there will have been some ARPA funds being used to cover, targeted towards mental health. We were paying for half of the mental health, what name is it, Tom? I don't know the name of the physician.
Clinician.
Clinician. We were paying for half of that position through ARPA funds. ARPA ends at the end of this calendar year. So the idea is we would be paying for it through then, so half of a half, if you will, or a quarter of that position, as we continue to lean off the ARPA funds and absorb that position into the budget. When we first targeted that mental illness with some ARPA funds, both for the police department and, at another meeting, you'll hear about it, in the youth and family services, was to see if we could make some headway on that. And now that COVID has gone away, the need for mental health assistance hasn't gone away. So the request will be again next year to absorb that half of a half into this budget. And then one thing that was also decreased during COVID, we had approved the 50th Patrol Officer, which was a five officers, one a year over five years. And that has been requested the last few years and continues to not include it in the budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to sum up what Mr. D'Nizio already stated, I mean, basically, the increases that you'll see in the budget, as always, salary is going to go up with step increases, but more to the body of the budget. You've got increases in the expenses. You'll see a $4,500 increase in the M&amp;S, as well as about $23,000 in the capital. So as far as those issues specifically, the M&amp;S, what we're seeing, you know, across the board in every sector of life right now, is you've got increases in everyday items. So we're seeing an increase in the ammunition, as well as our Taser cartridges. So in order to keep up with training proficiencies, we've obviously got to bump up those line items. The bigger issue you'll see in capital, the 229, we've got the cruisers, which again have gone up again this year, almost $7,000 per cruiser. And then we're going to start to take on the bulletproof vests as new officers come on. So right now, we're down three officers. By this time next year, we expect to be down six. So in order to be able to outfit them, not only with academy uniforms and regular uniforms, we've got to buy the bulletproof vests. So that accounts for some of the expense as well. Then in special accounts, excuse me, we've got an increase in the education and tuition of $13,500, and then uniforms, $2,000. That's a direct correlation to the academy costs that we're going to be bringing on for new officers. The academy tuitions, just to bring on three officers, as well as bringing them out when they get into the field training program, we've got to send them to 911 training and some other specialized training. And then we've also seen a bump in the in-service training as a result of police reform. It used to be a four-day in-service, and as part of that in-service, they taught the updates for CPR and first responder. They don't do that anymore. We have to do that. That's an incurred cost on us. So it's a five-day in-service training for each officer. So we have to account for that because, as you can imagine, we're bringing officers in sometimes on overtime. We're bringing the instructors in on overtime. And then as the uniforms, everything keeps getting more expensive, but to outfit the officers for the academy, and then when they get out of the academy, we've got to come up with those uniform costs. So that basically accounts for the increases in the budget, but I'm happy to take any questions specifically from any of you about it.
Paul, anything you want to add for your?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mike, that's yours. So committee, why don't you start with you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions, but I did want to say I'm so glad and that our department has Karen on board and all the work she does with the mental health clinician position. Mental health in this country is such a huge issue, and I'm glad we have that kind of asset on our staff to go out on calls or support, you know, the officers. I think it's very important, and it's a prevailing issue that is just going to keep reoccurring and be part of life, I guess, these days, especially after the pandemic. So and along with the substance abuse coordinator, I think they both do great work. I've had, as the liaison to the police, I've had an opportunity to talk and meet with them both, and I'm just so impressed with all the things they do in support, and it's money, I think, well-spent. And I'm glad that our police department has those options to them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that'll be good. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I concur with Mike. The, with mental health, well, with the police, they can respond on a crisis situation and resolve it that moment. But with mental health, the follow-up can take days, months, or in a couple of cases, even years. So our clinician, Karen, will get a case, so to speak, that will continue and continue and continue, but she also gets new cases. And now those continue. And then another new case. But there's also a side to her job that some people don't realize is we, our offices also get a little stressed out. We had an officer-involved shooting not two years ago. And all those things have an impact on the employees as well as the town, the people in the town. And we recently had, and we have incidents that don't affect, I shouldn't say, that are not Burlington-based, so to speak, but recently we had a person who was in a mental health crisis, but ended in Burlington because they ran out of gas in Burlington. And that's how it ended in Burlington's hands. So those are unexpected incidents and things that our clinicians will follow up on and the offices will follow up on. Chief, just one question. $300 emergency maintenance?
I'm sorry, for what?
$300 for emergency maintenance?
Where are you looking?
Uh, somewhere in, let's see, under contracted services. I think that station usually generates a little more than $300. I'm just a point of.
Well, luckily, I believe the facilities budget has a bigger line item in there, so we'll keep it at that. But, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to address the mental health clinician, you're exactly right. Just to show, since last year to this year, Karen has seen an increase of 25% in her call volume. That's 60% of her calls come from internal calls for service, and then the rest come from outside, as well as walk-ins. And she handles both long-term and short-term, excuse me, short-term situations, which frees up the officers. So we used to refer to them as, you know, the frequent flying type of call, where you're going repeatedly over to these, and we never could get to the root of the problem. And now with Karen there, we do, and she's outstanding. She's, you know, she's worth every penny. So and she just keeps getting busier and busier, and she serves on a lot of different committees and makes herself available to anybody who needs any assistance. So she continues to do excellent work. So thank you for recognizing that.
Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll add one thing to the mental health thing, and then I'll get off that boat. I think that this board and Chief U and BYFS and the schools should start a conversation now. I mean, you guys are already talking. I know that you guys talk quite frequently. But I think that over the coming years, a move towards strengthening a unified mental health program within the community will only serve you guys when you're out there, Karen, BYFS, the schools, how it's all interconnected, where it's not interconnected, and how we can help support, you know, really provide the funds that would be necessary either for more headcount or, you know, programs and systems, whatever it might be. Again, I know that you guys already have those conversations. This is my way of sticking my foot in the door, so I want to be a part of them. I have two questions that, you know, I should probably already know the answer to. The first is the funds that are in the capital section. What are they going towards?
So in capital right now, let me just show over to it here. We have, you know, listed in the specific items are automatic external defibrillators, the cruiser equipment that's going to go inside the new cruisers, dispatch chair replacements, as silly as that may sound, those are expensive chairs. They get a lot of wear and tear on them. We try to replace them at least once a year. We do carry some money in there for ballistic vests, the RRT and SWAT equipment, cruiser modems, some of the drug equipment, things like that.
Okay, great. And then I noticed that we're budgeting like almost $100,000 for gas.
Yes.
I feel like we've had this conversation too, which is why I feel like I should know this already, but thoughts on moving to EV vehicles as they get better and knowing that they've got that, I just learned about this over the weekend, the like, the brake recharge feature that some of them are now having, so that like, city driving becomes even more efficient, knowing that the cruisers are, you know, moving in about the, by and large, in about, you know, the town. Your thoughts on that?
So it's interesting you bring it up, and what I will say is, we tried this. We brought over the hybrids. We had three hybrids in the fleet the first year, and they have been very disappointing, to say the least. So much so that Ford now has stopped making them, which has now caused some backlog in the production. But the key to your question, I believe, is as they get better. So what was happening was, as you can imagine, a cruiser idles for a long period of time. When that vehicle finally does shut off and cuts the power from the electric battery to all the equipment, everything's got to be recharged and, I'm sorry, rebooted and stuff like that. So when you're in an emergency situation, it's not, it's not very conducive to line work with a cruiser.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I have one as an admin car. That's excellent. I love it. But it would not serve well as a line cruiser at all.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
We'll continue to keep our eye on that because I think we've all seen that there's been great strides in that area of vehicles. So it's only a matter of time before they are, but our limited history with them thus far has not been a positive one.
Live and you learn. Thank you.
Okay. You're very welcome. Chief, we appreciate your being here tonight, and I know it's no easy task to have a budget of this size and come in under the guidelines, so I want to thank you. Thank you for the hard work and your, and I'm sure you didn't do it alone. I'm sure you had a lot of some good staff people over there assisting you to do that. I guess, Joanne, a question for you, sir. So I know you mentioned absorbing half of half a couple of positions with the ARPA funds expiring. The opioid settlements monies that we had were part of, did we actually receive any of those funds yet, or is this, are these positions, if so, are some of these positions, when the operator runs out, the candidates for legitimate expense there?
So to two questions, yes, we have received funds, and yes, we have a group that which. So to two questions, yes, we have received funds, and yes, we have a group that, which the chief is part of, and so is Karen, that is working on a plan to how to spend those funds in accordance with the regulations. The funding is in a whole, it's a lot of money, but it's over a long period of time, and the ongoing is about, say, I think it's in the 25 grand, $25,000 range for the next 15 years-ish. We got a little chunk right off the bat, but they're trying to dissuade people from using it for positions for people and more for programs, for educations, for, you know, that type of...
Narcan.
...of stuff. Maybe, but the group is working on that.
Right. Okay, well, just...
I'm not saying that that isn't going to be one of the outcomes, but...
The substance abuse coordinator caught my eye, and so I thought, I was wondering if that was a legitimate expense for those funds.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, that I had read in the documentation from the opioid settlements is they're actually looking for you to sort of add something in as opposed to, we're already paying for that, so they would like it to be something additional, additional ways to help out with the crisis and not just sort of use it to mitigate the budget woes of us having to pay for it.
Gotcha, yeah.
Maybe an additional substance abuse coordinator, maybe something that, you know, aside from the fact that they're dissuading us spending it on people, but that would be seen as something that's additional levels of service in this area as opposed to just taking something that we're already doing and providing money towards that.
Okay, very good. All right, I have nothing further. Anybody else? No, sir. Entertaining motion to approve the police budget as presented.
Make motion to approve the police budget as presented.
Second.
Motion by Michael, second by Nick. Anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, zero. You go, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and thank you for the support.
Mr. Chairman, as Chief Connery makes his way up, I think he's here, but I can't see him behind the screen.
Yeah, very close.
High-level totals, oop, Chief Connery, we talked about two budgets today. Just the way it works, the EMS budget is a separate line, but to start with the fire, you can see that the fire was just below $10 million last year approved, and just over at 10.2 million this year, an increase of under $300,000, and for the first time since I've been here, under guidelines, as submitted. So that's no small task by Chief Connery. There's no requested change in headcount or FTE, status quo as far as personnel goes. Salary increases are contractual in there. There's, their department was any, going into the last year of collective bargaining agreement, as have all of our units. So some of the highlights, contracted services up a couple thousand dollars, materials and supplies up $4,000, and the capital up about $15,000. One thing to point out is last year, well, technically the last two years, because last May we did it for two fiscal years, was when we started finally using some of the revenues, additional revenues received from providing the ALS services. Those monies have been put into a receipts reserved account as they come in. Any of the costs that are associated, or any of the revenues that are associated with ALS are deposited into a separate account, and we request for them to be approved to offset the fire budget. So this will, we, last May, we did it for 2023 and 2024. The amount of $360,000, we're expecting to do the same this year, and the budget nets out at $360,000. One thing to point out and give poodles where they belong is that the overtime budget, you can see in your book, has shrunk by a couple of percent, I think 2.4%, but if you factor in the offset of $360,000 against it at 24 and only 300, you can see in the line there for 25, that's really a 5.6% decrease in overtime. So by getting some relief by replacing some people, hopefully that will be able to, that's some good news finally in that area. So just wanted to point that out, and listen, Chief Connery, take it from there.
Good evening.
Evening.
Hi, Chief.
He went over pretty much everything.
Good job, John.
Kept them speechless.
So some of the items that are higher, capital out, like licenses and certifications in the wellness program, those are all increases due to new hires. 111F payments for injuries, that's based on experience, but we've been doing better this year. That's for injuries, payments to the doctors and treatments themselves. I mean, I'll just take your questions if you have any.
Jim, that's yours. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, just a quick question. We just, we met this morning and discussed a few things. Should we talk about the vehicle issues here, or should, do you think it's better to talk about my subcommittee report?
Um...
Delay in production and all that stuff?
It's up to you. I mean, I can briefly mention it.
All right, so just to get the board a little heads up, prior to COVID years ago, if you wanted to get a piece of fire apparatus, you put it in, you put your request in, wait a year, maybe two to get it. The equipment we're requesting is now three to four years out. We currently have a ladder truck that should have been replaced last year. It was put in service in 2008, and we, hasn't, the new request that went in last year hasn't even started to be built. So we're looking at maybe another three years before we even get that, which would make this truck 19 to 20 years old when its expected life, its life expectancy is 15 years. To that point, meaning we have, we're probably going to have to start looking to add new apparatus earlier in the schedule. So even though it may not be time to change out an older engine or an older ambulance, at that moment in time, we may have to start doing the purchasing years in advance. So it, because it's taking years now, literally multiple years, just to get one piece of apparatus. So we really have to start being more proactive in getting our equipment, our apparatus. For example, last time our tower, when we, prior to the tower we have now, the tower we had before got condemned, okay? That was condemned. Now, think about having a condemned tower truck or a ladder truck in your fire department. Well, then we got to borrow, we borrowed one. That one, based on what I've been told, was mechanically worse off than the one that got condemned. So we can't wait on these things. We got to stop being more proactive and start getting the ball rolling on fire, at least with fire equipment, and I'm sure, like the chief said, the same thing with the cruisers, get their requests in, get them budgeted and approved earlier than we had in the past because it's just taken too long, and it's a, it's a risk to everybody in this town. Anything, was, has that, do the stats and stuff in my subcommittee?
Yeah, I mean, it's accurate. It's three to four years for the tower, two to three years for the engine. The ambulance we thought we were ordering early last year is still not, the chassis is still not available, so...
So my point is, we got to start moving on these.
I think Mr. D'Nizio had observations on that topic?
Yep, so same conversations that we were having last year, and we took advantage last year and got, instead of just ordering the tower, we did order the engine and we did order the ambulance, so we got on the list much sooner to the point Jim's making. So Chief Connery was all over that, and the lead times, as they got to be multiplied from what they used to be, we were able to get this board's approval and then eventually via the means of town meeting to go ahead and do that last year. But when we get to do the capital warrant articles at a future meeting, we'll see that there's another engine on there already to try to get ahead of that, too.
Mike, do you have a follow-up on that?
Question on this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the reasoning? Is this just normal supply chain issues, and are we seeing this with other department vehicles like cruisers or DPW vehicles? Is this something we should look at across the board, or is this unique to just fire apparatus, fire vehicles?
Well, I can let Chief Connery speak too, but I think fire apparatus is specialty builds and have always taken quite a bit of time. That time has extended even further, and everybody uses supply chain as the reason. I'd say to Paul, when we're late for lunch, I'd say it's supply chain. But yeah, we do see it in every other area, not quite as bad because they're not, not everything is specialty built, so, you know, our pickup trucks are, you know, F-350s or something like that, so they're, they're in production, but...
Dump trucks and whatnot, a lot, anything that's a large vehicle like that.
It's taken longer.
Significantly much, significantly much. There's also some additional changes to the state engine regulations in terms of engine efficiency and air pollution and things of that nature, which a lot of the truck manufacturers sort of haven't caught up with compliant design, so there's a lot going on in the world of trucks in particular.
Thank you.
Yeah, the DEF is a pain in the neck to...
Yes, yeah.
...put in there. Anything?
Just a couple of quick things.
Sure, go ahead.
I guess this question's more to Paul and John. If we're going to be experiencing longer lead times and even with us putting things in advance, would it behoove us to increase our mechanic headcount and have people on staff who are available to us to make repairs? And, I mean, like, these machines, these vehicles can't go down, like, we can't be without, you know? And I know that we already have someone on staff who is capable of doing that, but like, does it warrant having two?
That's a great question, Nick, and I guess I would defer to the chief on that. We haven't heard any of that from the department as of yet, but certainly, like I say, we have a phenomenal mechanic, and I do think the town has been very generous in its replacement schedule for fire trucks, so I think we average a piece of equipment every five years is what we shoot for. We do have backup piece of equipment, and like I say, the fire mechanic does an exceptional job by everybody's account in terms of keeping the equipment, but it's certainly definitely something worth keeping an eye on as we move forward.
Okay. I actually had a, I brought this up once before. Absolutely, you're absolutely right. With the mechanic over there, we're blessed to have him, he's very talented and hardworking young man, but a lot of his time is spent changing light bulbs and little things like that. And I had wondered aloud previous years about maybe reaching out to Sean Sheen for, you know, I guarantee you have no problem finding one of those work-study kids over there, who would love to spend their work week at a fire station helping out the mechanic do those, you know, the smaller tasks that, that he's often, takes a lot of his time away from the more pressing issues that you have there. Just a thought.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add that with the build-out of the new central maintenance building over there, there's quite a bit of collaboration that goes on between our fire mechanic, who has EBT certification, with the folks up there, who, one of them also has EBT certification. So things that he was always doing alone before over there in a building that might not be best suited for it, or more likely outside of the building that isn't, wasn't best suited for it. He's now inside the building and has another set of hands helping him. So hopefully, that's speeding up some of those longer projects that would take him forever.
Yeah, and it's a couple of quick little things.
Yes, go right in.
So first, Chief, thank you for listening to all the grants that you're getting. This is fantastic. I mean, you know, I think everyone underestimates the amount of effort that's required in applying for grants, you know, and so it takes a lot of, you know, administration time to make that happen, so thank you. And then I just have a curiosity question. I bothered not to look it up myself, I figured I'd ask you. What's a knucklehead light?
Oh, it's just a flashlight that it articulates on the top.
Oh, okay.
It can spin this way and then go up and down.
Awesome, okay. I saw it, and I was like, I could probably Google this, but I figured I'd just ask. Thank you.
That's anything I got? Okay.
A knucklehead question from me.
Yeah.
If nothing else, I'll get that from me, for sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, first I want to commend you on getting your budget underneath the guidelines. Nice work on that. I know it's tough. It's a lot better than last year. My question, I actually just have a question out of curiosity outside the budget, is how are we looking on staffing? I know that was an issue. How you doing? How you feeling? Are we getting you enough people? What's the current status of staffing?
So we appointed two two weeks ago. We have two more in the pipeline.
Good.
And we already have called for a list for three more, and that would take care of every position, including a retirement in July. So if we can get the three off this next list, we'll be fully staffed and fully trained and everybody on board by, I would say, the fall.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you're welcome. No questions, I think they've all been asked of you, but again, thank you for, just at like the police department, you guys get a large budget, and I know it takes quite a bit of your time and your staff to prepare this and applaud you for coming in under budget guidelines. All right, if there's nothing further, Jim, you have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the fire department budget as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second by Nick. Anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, you also do emergency management, correct? Correct them now. John, you want to start that one off?
Yeah, overview's pretty easy. Everything is the same as last year. No changes, 0% increase. Emergency management budget, it says in your notes, is, well, I'm not going to take. I talked a lot on the first one because I used to have to do it before Chief Patterson, but I know fire doesn't speak as much as... Steal all your thunder on this one.
So, you know, one of the biggest items in there is the assistant emergency management director, but everything else, all of it is the same. So we could fund trainings and buy some equipment that, in the past, we've bought generators, just recently bought some generators through a grant, but generators and sump pumps, you know, that was a hot item this last winter. We got a lot of rain following the snow and flooded some yards.
Questions?
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman. No questions, Mr. Chairman.
One question. I understand there was some storage issues, whoever stores a lot of stuff at Human Services Building up there, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that remedied?
Yeah, that's been...
Little kerfuffle over, forgets what face up there, something or...
Yeah, that was taken care of. That was moved to the fire station.
Oh, okay.
The mezzanine at Station Two.
Okay, all righty, very good.
It's accessible.
Motion to approve emergency management.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve emergency management budget as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Item 38 is discussion approval of town administrator evaluation and contract. I'm just going to stumble and bumble my way through this a little bit. It's never my, it's never comfortable, in my opinion, to ever have to perform a job, performance appraisal in a public setting. I think it's uncomfortable for me, and I'm sure it's uncomfortable for anyone who is the recipient of such appraisals and often times some, this is where we miss Mr. Morandi tonight because he would have a little levity to go along with this conversation, I'm certain of that, but...
We could have Paul in front of the room.
Yeah, let me just, I've got a couple, I got a little cheat sheet here, some notes. Let me just find it if you... Okay. John was nice enough to give it to me. What did they do with this? Bear with me, guys, bear with me. No, I got a little note right here. Yeah, that's mine, so. So you guys have, in front of you, some papers that Lynn provided for us, but let me start by this. Let me give a little summary of what we've been doing over the last few months since we last talked about this. Mr. Sagarino was evaluated individually by the board. The evaluations were calculated and a summary document was prepared, which you have, you all have copies of that in front of you. And following the prepared document, each of us had an opportunity to meet and discuss with Mr. Sagarino on the results of the document that was prepared. Now, there were 10 categories in the document that we all received and filled out and returned, and each category had a score for, in the range from one to four. One would be unsatisfactory, two improvement needed, three meets job standards, and four exceeds those job standards. So I'm going to ask each member to review the results of that survey that's in front of you. Let me just read off how Mr. Sagarino scored on average on each of these categories. Category one, personal characteristics, it was a 3.7. Professionalism, a 3.7. Public relations and communications, 3.6. Board support in relations, also a 3.6. Community leadership, scored very well, a 3.8. Organizational leadership, 3.7. Personnel management, 3.7. Financial management, also a 3.7. Town operations and infrastructure, 3.6. And the 10th item was planning and organization, also a 3.6. So each section also had a space for comments. I can tell you that all of the comments were positive. I enjoyed reading them, and I think the scores speak for themselves. I think Mr. Sagarino's done a wonderful job for us here in Burlington. I've had the good fortune of working for three different town administrators during my time here. All of them very good, in my opinion, although they each had different management styles. I kind of like Paul's style. His office is neat as a pen and you go in there and he's all, and what I like most is his door's always open and he's willing to engage in conversation and makes you very comfortable when you're in there chatting with him. And I like especially how he really gives a lot of thought to each and every question and concern that we've had. So with that, I am going to turn it over to each of you gentlemen to share your comments or if you have questions or for Paul, this is the time to do it. So Jim, why don't I start with you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can tell how good of a leader is when you talk to the board members, and I did talk to a couple of the department heads who report directly to the town administrator, and based on my conversations with those department heads, they love working for him. They use words like professional, smart, stuff like that, words like that. And based on knowing him prior to being on this board and knowing him on this board, I concur with those thoughts. I think he's doing a fantastic job. I mean, the evaluations across the board speak for themselves. A lot of the members had very similar comments from the free-form text part. I did tell him, when I sat with him and talked to him, I said, I was a little concerned at the beginning about his lack of public appearances at the, you know, because he was not always as, I don't want to say, he was definitely not Mr. Petron, is what I meant to say. Not in a negative way for Paul, but he was not a John Petron as far as.
When he was accounting, he was accounting and you could always find.
Yes, so, but he, I don't want to say surprised me, but I'm extremely impressed at public events, ribbon cuttings, his, every now and then dry sense of humor he throws in when he's talking about a project to the board and, I mean, he makes us look good, and that's all, I mean, I can't say more than that. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Chairman. You know, Paul doesn't like us talking about him, especially when he's in the room, but here we are anyways. You know, extroversion is not a requirement of leadership, and, you know, being comfortable in front of people is not necessarily a requirement of good leadership. And I think Paul has done a fantastic job as a leader for the organization that is the town of Burlington. There isn't a day that goes by that in my mind the board made the absolute right decision in appointing him as our town administrator. You know, he does, he leaves with thoughtfulness and kindness and empathy. You know, he's always looking through multiple lenses when it comes to, not just at the big things, but when someone comes barging into his office and wants to talk about something, right? You know, I've always admired Paul's leadership, truly. You know, it's something to take note of, that you can do so with more gravitas than, you know, with his, without having to be in your face about, you know, presence, right? And that's fantastic. It's a quality to be admired. Scoring charts in terms of overall, you know, feedback is a royal pain in the rear, you know, because it requires of us to have to put each of these things into a bucket, right? And I think that, you know, number buckets are certainly an unfair, not unfair, I guess limited, you know, way to score somebody. You know, but I mean, you look at these numbers and you say to yourself, here's an individual who does more than the job standards on a daily basis. And it's in that, it's in the comments that we saw, it's, you know, in how everyone sees him on a day-to-day that we step back and say, yeah, absolutely, there's no question in my mind. Now granted, you know, if we were here to rake him over the coals, that's absolutely something that would not be a fun public endeavor, you know, but, you know, Paul, I very much am thankful to have you as our town administrator, you know, and I think these scores are reflective of it. I think any score that was not someone singing your praises was, you know, I think only vocalizing how we want to continue to work better together. That was fantastic. It was constructive. It wasn't a detriment to how you currently do things rather than a way we thought we could move forward together. So, you know, this is, to me, this is exactly how you want to see a town administrator performance score look, you know? This is exactly what you want to see, and Paul is exactly the kind of leader that I would expect to see, you know, running a town like ours. So, you know, you can feel comfortable all you want. I'm going to say all the words, damn it. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Lynn, for aggregating all of our comments into a single, you know, round of your feedback. John, thank you for staying on my case to get this done, because I was slacking a little bit, you know, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Stett, thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unlike the rest of the board, I'm the newest member to the board and town government, and I haven't worked for any other town administrator but Paul, but I have been in the private sector a long time. I know what a good leader is and a good facilitator is, and Paul is all of those things. I've actually learned a lot from Paul in my two years on the board, and I think he has done a great job with keeping the board informed of what's going on, letting the board know all sides of an issue, how it impacts the residents, how it impacts the town budgets. And he's also, I think, done a nice job of reining me in because I can get a little excited and emotional about things and I'm not, when I came into town government, I didn't really know all the processes and all the things that you have to go through to actually get something done. And he's done a good job of reining me in and keeping me on task, so I appreciate that, Paul, very much. And I think the town of Burlington is very lucky to have Paul Sagarino as our town administrator. I think it makes me happy to come and serve this town every single day, knowing that, you know, he's in here and he's making all the right decisions and following, you know, our input and the town. You do the town a great service and we're very lucky to have you, and it's a pleasure and a joy to work with you guys and on this board and Paul and John and Lynn. So I had nothing but good things to say on the review and I'm very appreciative of all of your efforts and all the hard work you do, so thank you very much.
And of course, Sleklem Morandi's not here, but he has indicated.
But one night you wish he was.
Well, I kind of do. I wish he was, because like I said, he always brings a little levity to these type of conversations that we have here. But, you know, he's also very serious about the job he does, and he has indicated to me that he feels very much like the comments I heard here this evening, and I'm sure, I'm sure he will, when he has a moment, come and tell you that in person. But that concludes our comments on, there'll be another portion of this once we're done here, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to reply or respond.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really like to thank the board for your honest evaluations and feedback. I know it takes a lot of effort to do those, and it's, again, as everybody's indicated, one of the crazy things about this job is all this is done publicly, but, you know, I'm used to that, and I just want to let, you know, each of you know that I take your evaluations and your feedback very seriously. You know, I feel like if I did this job for 100 years, I would still have many areas that needed improvement. It's just that kind of job. It's just a really broad and there's new things that come up all the time, so I just want to let you know I appreciate your faith in me and I'll continue to work to, you know, be the best town administrator that I can. And again, I think one of the great things about the boards that I've worked for here is everybody is perfectly good with giving feedback on a day-to-day basis, and I would appreciate if you guys continue to do that. I appreciate the fact that you recognize the open door policy and hopefully you'll know that I'm not a person that gets upset by constructive criticism, so I do appreciate all the work that the board does. Thank you to John and Lynn for sort of organizing the evaluation, and like I say, I will continue to take the feedback in and try to improve, you know, on a day-to-day and a week-to-week basis, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, so now with the evaluation complete, you also have in your backup material a documented contract, a recommended contract extension or amendment to Paul's original contract with some numbers here in front of you that John and I have discussed and feel comfortable with that are well within the percentages that our employees have received over the, you know, over the years on average. I'd kind of, we would like to have some discussion and possibly approve the extension of Paul's contract tonight while we get you here. So Mike, why don't I start with you, if you have any questions or?
No, I think the, I looked over the figures and they are in line with, you know, the increases that we have been giving everyone, and I think that, you know, it's a very reasonable contract and it's, I'm in full support.
Nick?
No questions or comments from me on that yet. No, I'm in line with what I see here.
John, also in agreement, Mr. Chairman.
You got it. So good tonight. Appreciate that. Any, John, anything you need to add to this conversation on the extension or amendment or, am I missing anything? Did I touch all bases?
I think you did, yeah. So voting to approve the amendment to the contract.
That's what I'm going to do right now, if that's, okay. I just want to make sure I didn't miss any. All right, if there's nothing further, then we would entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the town administrator's contract as presented in your backup material.
So move.
Second by Mike, second by Nick. Anything for being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Or zero, is it? Good. So we're going to come around for at least two or three more years here. It's a good thing in my book. So many papers tonight here, sorry. Okay, item 39, approval minutes, regular minutes of February 12th and February 26th, as well as our strategic planning session of February 15th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain from the strategic planning meeting as I was unable to attend.
Okay. So let's take the regular minutes first, then.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 12th, 2024, and February 26th, 2024, as in the backup.
Second.
Motion and second, anything further? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Zero, zero. Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the strategic planning meeting of February 15th, 2024.
Second by Mike, second by Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0, 3-0-1. Subcommittee reports, I forget where I started last time, but you're sitting right next to me, so I'm going to ask you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to report to the board that we had our fourth meeting of the Police Station Building Committee, and it went well. All the meetings have been excellent, well-attended. This meeting focused on the design, and we saw some initial design renderings of the station, and I was very happy to see that they've started their first draft of the design with a nice colonial look, and it blended in nicely with our campus and the common, and the particular design actually blended in really well with the grand view. And I was particularly pleased that it was so well-received by Barbara from planning and the planning members, and they, they are tough audiences, we know, and they thought that it looked like it belonged in the town center. There were some good constructive criticism about making, potentially making it look more like the Union School from Mike Hardy, a representative from Ways and Means. He said he was at the 225 celebration and saw some photos inside Grand View and also on Burlington Retro, Burlington Retro dot com, that, of some of our older buildings, and he saw that the Union School was prominently displayed and thought if we could incorporate a little more of that look, it may improve the building and also help us commemorate the Union School. And the engineers were amenable to going back and take another crack at it. So it's just the first drawing, nothing's been, nothing's been decided. And our next meeting is February, March 21st, right here in the second floor meeting room at 10:00 AM. Again, they're broadcast on BCAT and open to anyone who wants to attend and participate, and also archived on the BCAT YouTube page, like all of our government meetings. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, yes, I'm pleased at the progression this group is making on that. Nick?
I actually don't have the updates, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little follow-up to Mike, the Police Station Committee, the discussions that came out of that were, they're taking little pieces or accents of the brick facades along with the Grand View facade to try to meld them too, so it almost looks like it's a little bit of each, so it fits just right in. The other thing that I thought was interesting was, going to see what can be saved as far as repurposed. Like, one of the ideas I had was maybe taking some of the stones and apply them to wherever the sculpture park might be and make a sculpture out of that, taking some wood from the building and making, Kathy Bay made a great, showed us a couple of potential things you could make and sell or give away from the building, so whatever can be repurposed, will be repurposed, but that's on that. Then. Then with the fire department, with the equipment issue aside, they were, again, busy in February, three hundred seventy-two runs, two hundred sixty-four of them were medical-related. They brush fire, kitchen fire, dumpster fire, fortunately no house fires in February. A lot of water calls, a lot of calls for flooding. I mean, it's been raining like crazy. And also, I just want to say, I attended the White Ribbon Day to denounce violence against workers and women at Leahy, very well-attended, numerous first responders, police and fire agencies there. Cindy Freeman was there, our state senator. It was just a great presentation and a great showing from all the communities around that Leahy serves.
Yeah, great, good to hear. Thank you. My goodness, I really don't have anything. I know we celebrate the town birthday party there over at Grand View, a very nice turnout over there. All kinds of things coming, which spring around the corner, but otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to commend town clerk Amy Warfield and her office for another spectacularly run election. Even these small primary-type elections, really with all the new voting laws, which, you know, we welcome, the mail-in voting and the in-person voting, they've really added a lot of additional work on, to the duties of that office. And as a reminder, we have four elections this year. That was probably the easiest one for the office, so they're going to get more intense as the year goes on. And kudos to Amy and her staff, they're just so organized and they do such a great job with it, and, you know, I think that's why we have a lot of faith in our election results here in Massachusetts, in Burlington in particular. They're just very orderly and efficient and are able to demonstrate the numbers and couldn't be happier with the way that that went. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, just more of an update on the police station. We heard from the building committee, but we did attend the opening of the hearing for the zoning change for the police station the other, last evening, last Thursday evening. It was a joint meeting, a planning board, land use and ZBRC. Thank you to Mike and Jim for making it to that one. We got some feedback on the project, and we'll, Chief Brown and I will be attending the ZBRC on Wednesday night for more discussion on the zoning change. So if anybody's available, that's a virtual meeting at six thirty on Wednesday. Please feel free to jump on and join us for that one. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Paul. Anything further, anybody?
You can motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, very good.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. And ladies.